Call the order, the meeting to order. And Mrs. Luton, would you please let the record show that all board members are present this evening? And we are going to start with a special guest to do our pledge of allegiance. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we welcome a representative from Gray Elementary School, and she will be leading our pledge of allegiance. London Wei- Weisner? If you want to come forward and stand right here, London. Before I get to brag on London, she is a fourth grader at Gray where she serves as a positive role model to everyone. And I have some really amazing things here from your principal, Mrs. Carter, who thinks that you're fantastic. And she says, "London's kindness, creativity, and her strong work ethic make her a leader at Gray. London is very active in math club, after-school book clubs, Gray Honor Choir, and she also serves as a steam club leader and a care leader. According to Principal Angie Carter, London helps make Gray a better school each day with her kindness and her leadership." At this time, we invite London's family, Mrs. Carter, and any other individuals who are with us tonight to support London, to stand so that we may acknowledge them as well. So now, I ask that those who are able to please stand while London leads us in the pledge of allegiance, and whenever you're ready, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. We'll do this and get a photo, okay?
A lot of you can't see this, but she has a dynamite trial.
So, yes, we're so pleased to continue with our honoring excellence this evening. At this time, we want to introduce you to Brittany Kaiser, who is a science teacher at Hickory Hills K-8. Brittany has been named Outstanding Beginning Teacher by the Missouri Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. This honor recognizes teachers in their first two years of service who demonstrate excellence in their work. They are selected based on recommendations from teacher education programs in the candidates' school districts. Hickory Hills Principal, Mr. Tracy Williams, describes Brittany as a great addition to the Spartan staff. She not only teaches, but also cosponsors student council and is the eighth-grade volleyball coach. Through these efforts, Brittany has developed positive relationships with both her students and fellow staff. Brittany will be honored at an awards ceremony on March 27th during the organization's spring conference in Columbia. Congratulations to Brittany. We are now pleased to share with you our March Power of One Team Celebration, which allows us to honor a group of employees who have demonstrated a powerful impact on teamwork and collaboration. Each month, we select one outstanding example, and we are pleased to share with you our March story.
I often joke that the paraprofessional staff at Delaware School are some of the hardest working men and women in show business. They are doing an unimaginable number of things to support the teaching and learning structures here at Delaware School.
We help them in all aspects of their daily life. Anything that they could possibly need, we take care of them, and we love them.
Before I, we had our special needs kid, I worked here. I believe in fate. I think fate led me here to deal with the kind of kids that I would deal with later on in life when my daughter Molly came into the world.
They are providing what could be considered pretty much total care for, for some of our students.
Delaware is really cool because we have a lot of staff. Being able to have so many people with so much experience in the building, it's a very open environment, so there's no shame in not knowing how to work with a student.
We all get together, and we train together, and then we, we just know we're there for each other.
Every person that's brought on board here at Delaware School to work in this position believes in the power of teamwork and the, the power of collaboration and cooperation, and just that spirit of doing what is best for kids, no matter what it takes to do what's best for kids.
There's a lot of people really willing to help here.
You know, honestly, I feel like what I'm doing is important. I feel like I'm contributing to these kids' lives.
And as you can see, we have an amazing team from Delaware here tonight. I want to say there are many teachers as well to show their support for our support staff who do amazing work every day. And I think it's very appropriate that their T-shirts say, "Kind people are my kind of people." And that's the work that we see every day at Delaware. So I will read the names of the team members, and they will come forward, and we invite the teachers also to join them, and we want to make sure Mrs. Patterson is going to give out pins to each of you, and then we'll have a group photo as well. So it is our pleasure to introduce to you the Special Services Support Team from Delaware Elementary School. It includes Marilyn Benford, Sarah Buckner, Latina Coombs, Christine Cornelius, Kathy Cox, Michelle Draper, Holly Fees, Nicole Harden, Dan Heasley, Rob Helm, Brooke Katona, Leann Kruger, Becca Lashway, Mary McCarthy, Angela McCoy, Ryan McCahey, Joe Moore, Ron Rogers, Suzie Sealy, Deborah Schuman, Samuel Thompson, Alicia Todd, Cindy Wassman, Christina Wilkinson, and Gail Wonder.
Just makes, it touches my heart.
I'll never leave that road in my blind eyes.
Oh, I know.
Ever.
I was just there four weeks ago.
We are proud of you, Stacey. We are proud of you. Woo hoo! We are proud of you, Stacey. We are proud of you. Woo hoo!
And at this time, we will move forward with our partner recognition, and we're pleased to welcome Mrs. Marty Moore to recognize one of our dedicated community partners.
And I'll be following that same theme of collaboration with the group that we're going to be recognizing today. Seventy-one Springfield public schools and partnering organizations spent two weeks in January collecting food and fund donations during our eighth annual Food Fight competition to benefit Ozark's Food Harvest, the largest feeding American food bank for southwest Missouri, which serves 270 organizations across 28 counties. This year, even though we were a little bit worried with the economy and the government's shutdown, food and fund donations helped provide 57,000 meals, marking it as our record year to date. Yay! The food donations will benefit Ozark's Food Harvest Partner Pantries in Springfield, including those in our own schools at Hillcrest, Jarrett, Studio Alternative, and Central. The collected funds that were raised at the schools will sponsor 29 children for a full school year of weekend backpack program meals. Area businesses and nonprofits partnered to serve as collection points. Partners included Arlington &amp; Row &amp; Company, Central Christian Church, Culvers, Doubletree by Hilton, Great Southern Bank, HM Employee Benefits and Risk Management, Little Caesar's, Mid-Missouri Bank, National Avenue Christian Church, Ozark's Dharma Group, OCH Medical Health System, O'Reilly Automotive, Penn Mac Staffing, Seminole Baptist Church, the Martin Center, The Pitch Pizza &amp; Pub. The annual competition helps our students understand that hunger is all around them. And because the donations provide meals in our own county and in our own schools, it's an incredible opportunity for kids to see the impact of their collective work. We were very blessed because Jean Gravel, our Director of Health Services, mobilized the nurses to serve as the point person. And so later this week, Ozark Food Harvest will be recognizing our winners in each of the different categories. So Pipkin won at the middle school level, led by Keely Dudley. Kimberly Speek and Angie Owings at Kickapoo were the winner in the high school category. And they'll get traveling trophies. You may remember the four. Five elementary schools have classes that will win field trips to the Ozark Food Harvest, and they are Bissett, led by Kim Smith, Bowerman, led by Jana Lewis, Jeffries, led by Laura Smith, McGregor, led by Melissa Hanks, and Pittman, led by Alexis Snodgrass. And so they'll go out and recognize those kids and their groups at the sites. This year, because of an outstanding Above and Beyond participation, we decided to create a collective New Area Above and Beyond Award. Studio Alternative, participating, I might add, for the very first time, took the drive to new heights. So tonight, we'll be recognizing this collective group that worked together. Amy Garten led the drive and collaborated with Beth Nichols, who spearheads the Empty Bowls fundraiser. Camilla Price, the art teacher, had her class make the bowls that are used for the event. And Cara Mally collected donations from the PALS students, and then the team did a whole school-wide collective penny drive. And in Amy's words, it was a team effort that made their fundraiser successful. And she is so proud to be a part of this amazing group. So I'm going to ask them to come forward along with Diamond Trahillo, Riley Terro, Scotty Wright, who are the students that made the actual bowls. And I'm very excited to say that each of you will be receiving one of the Empty Bowl's works.
Us getting better all the time. We love gifts.
And I'd also like to recognize Riley's work for designing the T-shirt that she's got.
Great work. Thank you so much.
And we've got some Food Fight swag for each of you.
Thank you.
Stay up here just a second. We're going to get one more picture.
And then I'm going to ask the Ozark Food Harvest folks to come up. Jennifer Sickinger, who coordinates this and helps us mobilize our partners and has just been a delight to work with for many years. So on behalf of Springfield Public Schools, we thank you for your work.
This is awesome, you guys.
Oh, wait, she, she got one more. Sorry. Okay. And?
Okay. Well, first off, we just, at Ozark Food Harvest, we just, every year, we're so amazed at what the community does, what the students are able to do. And our goal is to not only raise meals for our community, but to plant those seeds of empathy, to plant a lesson for these kids to take forward and, you know, become leaders in our community and recognize that not everyone that we go to school with or work with, play or serve God with are actually, have enough at home. And so it's so important that we take care of our neighbors. So we're so proud to be able to present to you. Not a traveling trophy, this will stay at Studio Alternative. This is an Above and Beyond Award. You know, every year when we go through this, like I said, I'm just amazed at what we raise, but what you guys did and the amount of meals that you raised per student, because that's how we determine the winner, the number of meals raised per student, so it levels the playing field for all schools. Beyond anything I've seen before, so thank you so much. And your event is so beautiful. An empty bowl represents the, the neighbor without the meal, the empty bowl. It's so important in food making. So to hear that you tied in your Empty Bowls event with this event was really touching for us. So we want to present you with the certificate for Above and Beyond, and we want to present you with not a traveling trophy, but the, the large-sized fork. And so if we could get a picture, I'd love to get in the middle here with you guys. And do you mind holding the fork? I'll let you be the fork holder.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. And I know they'd love to stay and hear our business, but we're going to give them the opportunity.
No, I've told everybody, when you're done being presented to, hit the road, right, London?
She was looking for the door. Bruce, that's not you.
No. Okay, everyone, Bruce over. Stay. I thought I was clear. All right, you all, we're going to move right along to 1.04, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, March 19th, 2019 Board of Education Regular Board Meeting Agenda? Thank you, Alina, and a second.
Second.
Jerry, thank you. I got to find my people, and let's vote. I'm hoping it's not close. You guys are not going to hear that dumb joke I tell every time. Much longer. I'm almost done here. Our presidency is almost a thank you. I like that about you. Okay, cool. Phew, pass. Well, I think this is my last one, isn't it? Isn't this my last meeting?
Time will tell.
People, okay.
They could reelect you.
Making her tear up.
Guys, stop. Okay. We're going to move on to Public Comments, 2.01, and I do have an agenda item, comment this evening, Pat Scott. So I am going to read the information about that. Yes? The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by our Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with speakers during this meeting. If you have materials that you wish to share with the Board, please provide them to the Board Secretary, and she will distribute them to the Board members. Ms. Scott? Hi, good evening. Come on up.
Good evening. I consider this a real privilege that I'm allowed to speak to you almost a lot.
Almost a lot.
And this, this is an operational item, I think, or a curriculum item, and then my real passion for kids and education. And so I think this topic tonight, whichever way the bond issue goes, it's pretty much whatever's going to go, but I would like to ask you to consider, this could be a budget item. You know, we don't have any problems spending five or 600,000 for a consultant to figure out what to do with the buildings. And certainly, there are some that need some improvement. Consultants for this, consultants for that. I would like for you to consider a consultant for our curriculum. Now, I know we have very qualified teachers and, and people in this office that must be doing that, but we, as you know, there's a lot of comments, there's a lot going on out there about the bond. Some of the board members have said, "We only have one employee to supervise, and that's the superintendent." And we have a candidate who says, "This district has been smoldering for a long time with regard to test scores and performance, and now it's burning and it's on fire." Well, that may be an exaggeration, but you know, it might be time to consider really looking at the curriculum, because what we all want to do is improve this for kids everywhere, not just where our kids go in the southeast part of town or some school, that they're going to do well no matter what. That has not been my concern. My concern is these Title I schools, and I just don't think we have any proof, and I may be wrong, that Ignite is working versus some remedial courses in the summer, or that the open classrooms are working. So just whenever the results of this bond come in, I really would hope that this board would consider, let's look at this. And I'm not, I don't want to be accusatory, whoever's in charge of curriculum, but I think we're missing the boat. I think it's way too much tech, not that we don't need that, but I think we need somebody that'll step back and look at this. What are we doing? Should we start in kindergarten? Should they have it in their hands every hour? And in some cases, they do, I know, because I'm out there, I've seen it. I would, and I may be wrong, and you guys may probably know more I do about it, but I would really like to see somebody really look at this, because I think it's all, I don't know what my time is, but I think it's all up in the air. This has come about so fast. I've been in the schools over 20 years when we had teachers manuals that will kind of tell you and guide you what to do. I was in a class and had to teach, now my mind's blank. I didn't have anything prepared tonight. The metric system, do you remember when we were in school and the metric system was going to replace our numbers? And we had to learn it, we had to learn it now. I had to teach this grade today where there was no teacher's manual. They just said, "Explain this to the kids, give them a test." So I used the Google, I used Chromebooks really fast to bring myself up to speed. But I'm rambling, and I hate that. But I really hope you can figure out, and I don't think that's a reflection on the superintendent or on the people in charge of curriculum. I think we need to step back and look at that. We don't have any problem doing that with buildings. I think we spent probably better than a half a million dollars figuring out how to do the buildings and get that to go over. I, for one, would vote for whatever's needed, to have somebody step back and really look at this. You can go online, and you can find everything to support some program. And you've done it, I'm assuming, because I've done it, and some of it's good, whether it's PBL or whatever it is. I do appreciate your letting me talk or ramble, whatever it is, but I'd like for you to look at that. We can find the money to do that. Any way this bond goes, I believe we need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thanks for being here. All right, we are going to move on to three, four, and five, which are the Consent Agenda Minutes, Financial, and Personnel. Is there a motion that the Board approved Consent Agenda Items 3.01 through 5.01?
So moved.
Is that you, Charles?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Bruce, thank you, and let's vote. Okay, and that passes, and we'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. Ms. Embry is here, 6.01. Good evening.
Good evening. Our normal reports have been posted for your view on our public website, referred to as Board Docs. And we are showing with the budget amendments that have been provided, excuse me, that include some significant revenue realignment between funds. We do show that there is a slight change in the fund balance percentage projected for June 30 to 16.9 percent, still very stable fund balance. And the budget amendments include, again, that realignment of revenues, including basic formula and tangible tax, M&amp;M surcharge and interest. And then on the expenditure side, we have some realignment to actual for title expenditures and Special Education Part B, so federal funds within that. The Bond 2013 Report is provided, and you can see that we've continued to include all of the expenditures that you've approved relative to that information. We're hoping to reach closure on that very soon, this year hopefully, but there may be a little carryover into the next year, dependent on when all the work is completed for that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I agree that the fund balance is fairly stable, but is there an ideal there? Because it's slightly down, right? But still stable.
It's very slightly down by a quarter of a percent. And actually, we have Board Policy DIAA on fund balance, and the desired fund balance is at least 15 percent. And there's some specific language within that that we would work to continue to strive toward that 15 percent.
That's the minimum. What would you consider the ideal?
From my perspective, the ideal is that which allows us to not need to borrow money to meet payroll prior to receiving our local tax revenue in January.
That would be good.
Yes. And so I, I believe we are in that sweet spot with regard to our fund balance percentage. I can run numbers to show exactly where that threshold hit. It changes every year relative to the new expenditure base, and, but we can...
I mean, it hasn't gone down very far.
No.
And I'm not really worried about it.
Right. And, and it's normal to see some fluctuations of this nature.
Jerry?
Quick question. I know we don't know on state revenues yet because of taxes, the way the tax is...
Right.
What about local with property taxes and stuff? Is that kind of on target?
Yeah.
Hopefully, all that's been collapsed. I tried to find exactly what I was looking for.
Right.
I wasn't sure where I was finding it. How was that looking?
Let me see if I can, if I have that with me in the moment.
And you don't have to...
We did, yeah, we did do some realignment for that. I'm not, I'm not pulling it out just right, right away, but I can get that information to you, but...
Had a schedule behind schedule, or...
Right. Oh, it's, it's right on target.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions for Ms. Embry? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And is there a motion that the Board approved the Treasurer's Report as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Tim, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Charles, and let's vote. Because I'm very excited about this next thing that we're going to do with my friends here in the front row. Well, I know Natalie is a friend, too, but...
In the back. In the back. You have friends in the back row, too.
One of my friend in the back row. You have some photographies and things.
We do.
Well, I, I like to honor my services.
Oh, okay.
Am I coming up to, it's all Natalie all the way?
It's all me?
It's all you. Welcome.
Okay. Just here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very excited to be here tonight. Excited to be invited. And Mr. Lee, thank you so much for the kind words that you said about our event at the last board meeting, which I think sparked, oh, okay, which kind of sparked the invitation for, for us here tonight. So I know you've all heard about our event, flock together, no family left behind, so I have some rock stars here to talk to you about our event. So I'm just going to kind of tee it up for them, and then I'm going to introduce who's, who's with me tonight and let them just kind of take over and explain kind of how we got to flock together, no family left behind. How do I get this to advance? There we go. So it has been a journey. This is something that we have worked on for many, many months this school year, and it all kind of started last July when I received our Missouri Student Health Survey data that our students last year took in the spring. And as you know, that that is a survey that our students take every other year. And we had a great response rate at Glendale High School. We had 823 students at Glendale High School take that survey. And so I'm not going to sugarcoat it, some of the results were rather shocking. We were above average at Glendale High School for a number of categories that we don't want to be above the state average in, but I think one of the things that really, really was alarming to me was the fact that we had so many students struggling with mental health issues. And so, you know, I think that we all hear about substance abuse and, and bullying, and we're, sometimes we get a little numb to that, and those numbers aren't surprising, but I think that what we're not numb to is the, the information about, about mental wellness. And so when I got the data back and we had an actual in, like, it's one thing to hear percentages, but when you hear a number of students, and that number for Glendale High School was 59, 59 students at Glendale High School had seriously considered taking their life. Just to kind of put that in perspective for you, that's about one kid in 75 percent of our classrooms. That's huge. What an impact that would have on our school if something like that were to actually happen. And so we've had a lot of conversations. I took this data to parents, and I have Leslie Skinner here, who is our PTSA president, who's been very involved with our student group. I took it to our student leaders, three of our student leaders are here tonight, and our teachers. So we've had multiple conversations, and through those conversations, Blaze Ebis has been in from the very beginning, and so... We were above average at Glendale High School for a number of categories that we don't want to be above the state average in. But I think one of the things that really, really was alarming to me was the fact that we had so many students struggling with mental health issues. And so, you know, I think that we all hear about substance abuse and bullying, and sometimes we get a little numb to that, and those numbers aren't surprising. But I think that what we're not numb to is the information about mental wellness. And so when I got the data back and we had an actual in, like, it's one thing to hear percentages, but when you hear a number of students, and that number for Glendale High School was 59, 59 students at Glendale High School had seriously considered taking their life. Just to kind of put that in perspective for you, that's about one kid in 75% of our classrooms. That's huge. What an impact that would have on our school if something like that were to actually happen. And so we've had a lot of conversations. I took this data to parents, and I have Leslie Skinner here, who is our PTSA president, who's been very involved with our student group. I took it to our student leaders, three of our student leaders are here tonight, and our teachers. So we've had multiple conversations. And through those conversations, Blaze Ebbish has been in from the very beginning. And so he's also part of our peer mediators, he's on debate, he's going to be our student body president next year, just someone that really wants to take action. And so back early on in the school year, August, September, we were looking at this data and came up with an idea, which primarily was, our peer mediators that came up with this idea, was to work with a group from Missouri State, the Missouri State Center for Dispute Resolution, and they came up with this public dialogue. And so we held that dialogue on the 30th of October. And in this slide, just threw in a few pictures so that you could see the kind of response that we had. This event was held in the evening on October 30. We had about 280 parents and students participate in this dialogue. And so this is just some not great pictures they're taking on my iPhone. So they're not great, but it kind of gives you an idea of the serious intense dialogue that we had about the data that we received on our Missouri student survey. And so at Blaze's suggestion, I've kind of teed this up and put these videos in. So we're going to show you a couple of videos that give a highlight of our event, which was held on February 26th, Flock Together, No Family Left Behind. And then they're going to take over and kind of tell you a little bit about their role and how we planned and moved forward with this event. They're very short.
Boom, time to get up and grind.
Hey Siri, turn off the alarm.
You're very kind, thank you.
A lot of students struggle with these problems.
1,400 kids.
If you don't like the reflection that looks back in the mirror, don't blame it on the mirror.
In the next 10 years, you stay up to the wee hours of the morning, gaming or being on social media, watching TV, sleeping on the beanbag chair, naked, eating Doritos, contemplating what things aren't working out.
Because we only know what we know, and so therefore we can only do what we have learned.
And that we understand these issues.
Every student to know their voice matters.
Everyone is dealing with something. Everyone has a story.
They had a survey, 59 kids not only thought about making that forever decision, but they had a plan and were seriously considering taking action.
How do I get you the help that you need?
Titles or testimonies?
Take care, my friends.
Boom, time to get up and grind.
Hey Siri, turn off the alarm.
I should have had one of them doing this.
You can call a friend.
Escape?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. And then our own students at Glendale High School, along with Mr. Thomas Matia and Jimmy. And Mr. Thomas put together this recap video, and some of you may have seen it because we put it out on Twitter. But it does a really good job of just kind of showing what the entire day, our entire event looked like, especially from the eyes of a student. And it's, again, real short, but it'll give you an idea.
effort. But our students at Glendale High School are primarily responsible for the success of this event. And so I'd like for Blaze to talk to you a little bit, and then I'll let you introduce your friends.
Yeah. So Dr. Caldwell did a pretty good job energizing me. I'm Blaze. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about how this event was planned and what it was like when it was actually run. So after the public dialogue that we hosted back last year, the administrators, the counselors, and me worked to decipher the comments and the information and feedback that we got back about the event. And we saw one of the biggest things that everybody wanted was more education and awareness spread about these issues, because many students like don't really know the implications of like their actions, they don't know how to reach out to others and things like that. And so we decided that we needed to do something about this. And so we decided to plan this event to increase awareness and spread some education about these issues. So to accomplish this, we started by recruiting different students and setting up different committees to run parts of this event. So we had different committees for each of the topics to make sure we got all the speakers together and the resources that we needed to educate students. We had people working on the logistics and running it, making sure everybody was going where they were supposed to be. And then we also had things for the vendor fair where we gave out information and resources to our students. We also had a committee for marketing as well, which will be talked about a little bit later. And so then from there, we started working with different volunteers around the community to get people together to actually come to this event and speak to our students about these issues. And we had all sorts of different professionals, from school counselors to different programs around Springfield Public Schools. So the actual day of the event, we had students who would go around with a teacher, essentially a classroom size. And we started with our keynote speaker, Jeff Yalden, which was that first video. He's a nationally renowned speaker and about public health, or mental health. And so we had him to start off the day, and then we had students go around to different classes and breakout sessions where they would learn about different topics from a wide variety of different speakers and have activities they participated in. We also had the vendor fair where we had different resources and things for students to pick up and go through and talk with different people about all these issues. And then the last thing we had for this event is the reflection period during the last block of the day. We had students work with the teachers to submit their responses, their ideas, comments, concerns about the day. And we also had teachers participating as well, so that we can understand the benefits of this event and some of the flaws and things we can do better next time. So yeah. And next, we have Avery Bolton, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the marketing behind this.
Avery and I are working out a few kinks, it's all good.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so as Blaze mentioned, my name is Avery Bolton, and I am a Glendale Decca student. I'm also in marketing too. And as the upper level marketing students, it was kind of our job to devise like a brand in which we could like spread the word of what Flock Together really is. So we started with a logo, this logo right here. We have the Falcon and then the Glendale logo in the middle, and we thought the wings kind of represented togetherness and kind of bringing everybody together. And then at the top, we have Flock Together. Now, these bags were given to all the students who attended all of the speaking and stuff like that. And we also had additional bags that were given out. And inside the bags, they got a little social media tab that said everything that we have social media-wise and how to contact people. And then we also gave out Flock Together bracelets for all the students to wear and still spread support. And then we have a little flyer here with the Flock Together information on it. Again, all of our social medias and all of the important contact information that the school provides for raising mental health awareness. We also created t-shirts, and that's what Alexis Blaze and I are wearing, and Dr. Caldwell was. But we have these t-shirts just to represent the committee and who's on it. And so when all the students got together, if they had any questions as to where to go or basically just the logistics of it, they knew who to ask and who to come to. And at the beginning of Flock Together, we had student ambassadors, is what we called them, and they all waited for their speakers to arrive, and we all met them at the doors, and we gave them little name tags. So the students could differentiate between like the staff at Glendale and the speakers so they didn't get anything confused. But we also had a press release that was given out to like radio shows and KY3 and stuff like that. And they kind of did a little press release and just talked about what Flock Together was going to be like. And I think it was a great success. So that's all I have to say. And we are also giving all of you guys one of these bags with a bracelet in it, so.
Wow, thank you.
Hi, my name's Leslie Skinner, and I'm the PTSA president. And what a great event we had. It continually makes me realize how proud we are of all of our kids at Glendale. I had the opportunity to work with Dr. Caldwell for years. However, to have majority of the events planned by these kids, from the marketing aspect to Blaze and his team, to the team ambassadors, they all did a great job. Funding for the Flock Together was provided by the PTSA Capital Campaign that we run. When the parents and businesses, we go to them and ask them for donations in the beginning of the year. This gave us the opportunity to tell them about how we, what we wanted to do for this Flock Together event. The Glendale volunteers during the event, on my end, included parent volunteers, obviously our PTSA, our student hospitality cabinet and chair, Hallie Robbins and her team. We also had our Glendale culinary team, which I highly recommend, they've got great cupcakes. I think as Blaze said, our vendor fair had 50 businesses involved in that, and our breakout session had 40 speakers for that. My main role in this event was to hire our keynote speaker, which I feel like we were blessed. His name is Jeff Yalden. He is known as the aha speaker. He started speaking in 1992. He has traveled in 50 states, 49 countries, and has spoke to over 5 million people. He is labeled the number one team motivational and mental health speaker in the world. His highlights include "It Will Be Okay," and that's what he discusses in his book called Team Mental Health Suicide Prevention. And that is something that can be purchased on the jeffyalden.com website. I highly recommend it. It was a great book, had the opportunity of reading it, and I passed it on to several other people. He also speaks from experience with a no-nonsense approach. I'm happy to say that as the end of the day went on, Jeff, he didn't want to go out to lunch, he wanted to hang with the kids. And the kids flocked to him. And we are proud to say that there were a couple of individuals, students, that Jeff felt the need to spend more time with them. And at the end of the day, the parents were called and the kids got help that they needed.
Thank you.
So I think that Blaze or Avery, I think, was talking about our student ambassadors, the, where this little mouse is, this is what our presenters walked into. It was probably one of the most exciting things of the whole day. So we had sent out some information. Mrs. Coffield and actually Dr. Jungman's daughter, Hallie, worked on part of the ambassador logistics plan, and it sent out information to all of our presenters and said, you know, where to park, where to report. And so when our presenters walked in, they had this group of about 40, which is also kind of represented here, up here, of kids waving at them, welcoming them into Glendale. You know, they had their name like they were, you know, waiting, a car waiting for them or whatever at the airport, but it was pretty cool. I think that our students did such a great job of making our community feel welcome at Glendale. I heard so many of our presenters say, you know, "Thanks for inviting us, this was a great event." And I just kept saying, it was the kids at Glendale, they planned it, they organized it, they thought of every detail. Granted, they had help, you know, our counselors were very involved and some other key teachers, but we really listened to what our kids wanted the day to be like. We had an intern that helped us put together our vendor fair. And I just, I think I told Mr. Lee that day, we were talking about it, because the event was probably way more successful than we thought it would be, because having not put together an event this size, it was like a conference, a professional conference at a high school. And so just the experience and the success that we found, I think everything just lined up right. We had the right student leaders, we had the right participation from the community, it was the right time because mental awareness issues, that's really important right now. And I think we're at an epidemic with our teens when it comes to mental health. And so I think everything just lined up, and it just made for the perfect event for us. And so could it get better? I really don't know that it could, but I'm sure it could somehow. But we were pretty pleased with the success. And I think that's the last slide. But we also have Alexis Morrison here, who I thought you might want to ask some questions. And I feel like our three students, and of course Mrs. Skinner too, is welcome to field any questions, but I know that they would love to share any additional information that you might desire from the event. All right, you guys step up here, and you can give them their gifts, and you guys can just ask anything that you would like.
So who did we not hear from?
That's me.
Alexis.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So what, I'm trying to ask you, tell me, what was the most surprising thing to you ladies and gentlemen?
Surprising?
Yeah.
Um, I would definitely say, whenever you kind of hear, for me at least, I know I can speak for several students, I'm at Glendale, whenever you hear like motivational, you're just like, hmm, okay. But there's never really like, at the end of like a speech that you hear that might be like considered a motivational speech, there's never really like an aha moment where they tell you exactly how to fix problems that you have or that other students have that you could help with. And that is something that Jeff Yalden did very effectively. He gave us the resources. And that was something that was so great about the Glendale Resource Fair, is that we also provided those resources. And so something that was just surprising to me, honestly, was hearing that 59 students had a plan to kill themselves. Like, these are my classmates, these are my peers. And so that's something that is just like heavy on my heart, hearing that, and that I'm just so glad that the Glendale administration and teachers just took the initiative to make this event possible because it was something that was so vital, and I'm just really proud to be a part of it.
Any of the rest of you? Oh, you get, oh, here comes question man.
What kind of feedback did you get from your peers after the day was over? You did a wonderful job digitally putting it all together, so kudos on that. What did you hear, what did you hear from your peers, your fellow students?
I'll go, I'll go first. Okay, so I heard especially like, not just like the people who are running it, but the people who are running it, the student ambassadors and everything, they sat in there and they heard the speech, the same speech being given three different times. And as one of those student ambassadors, I thought, you know, me and this group of 50 kids is going to hear the same speech twice a day, even though they're all different speeches, but we're still hearing the same one three times a day, this is going to get boring. But each time I heard it, and each time I heard the response of the children in the classroom, it was crazy. I worked with somebody from Lost and Found, she was a counselor at Glendale and then moved to be a counselor at the Lost and Found sector. And she gave multiple personal stories. And in both of the classes, or two of the, the first two classes she gave, two students from each class like spoke out and said something. And that kind of sparked more talking and more communication within the classroom. And I think people are afraid to like share their feelings. And I think having this huge organization and having everybody come together, especially these teens coming together and working, it helps these students because when it's just administrators, sometimes the students are very reluctant to get involved. But since it's student ran and administrator ran, we saw a lot more involvement.
So that was on the like breakout session side, but also with the keynote speaker, I did not hear one bad comment about him from students. Everybody loved him. After he gave his speeches, there would be students like that came down from where they were sitting just to talk to him afterwards, like crowds of kids just trying to talk to him because they thought he was so awesome and so inspiring and helping them with their journey.
We got a little session away from, because us ambassadors didn't get to watch the keynote. And so after everything was done at about 1:30, we got to go all sit in the auditorium. It was like, I'd say it was like only 30, 40 of us. And we got to listen to him, and we were all down the front row, so we really got to hear what he was saying. And his speech was just super impactful. And I've heard motivational speakers, you watch them on YouTube, you, you know, watch them wherever you can on TV. And then to see one in person and see him being so good, and you really get that like, I get it now, it was great.
Okay, so I'm going to give you a confession. You ready? So when I get asked to go participate in things, I don't pay a lot of attention-
So when I get asked to go participate in things, I don't pay a lot of attention, I just say yes, and I'm working on saying no, but I always just say yes. So I said yes to go do this, and I didn't really pay a lot of attention, so I didn't really even recognize when I walked in that day, notwithstanding the fact that there was someone telling me where to park, like I should have had a clue.[613.54][613.54](laughter) But I walk in, I did not know it was run by the students, okay, and I'm somebody who's been to a lot of conferences. It's totally true that you guys did an awesome job. Now, I like to say that I don't call him the ambassador that took care of me all day, I call him my handler, because I'll tell you, I like only went to the bathroom alone, he was with me through everything. And I, I really like what you said, because, so they asked me to talk about relationships to teenagers three different times, and I was like, wow, you know, like I can even talk to juries about murder and bad things that happen to people, but this is rough, that's gonna be like a tough crowd, three times? They were awesome, and my, what'd you tell me his name was, David?
David.
All right, so David did talk to me about having heard the way three different groups interacted with the message, and boy, they were just, they were respectful, they were engaged, but you guys did a phenomenal job. I, I usually do not wax on like this when I go to present at something, but it was, it was impressive, and I must say, the cupcakes were good.[673.66][673.66](laughter) But it was just delightful, so thank you, and you know, you're giving too much credit to anyone but yourselves, because you deserve the credit for what you accomplished.
Thanks so much.
Anything else you want to share? Anybody else want to ask? You were there, weren't you?
Yes, it was all.
Did they ask you to talk about something hard like relationships?
No, they knew better than that. No, it, it, I don't think, I said most of the last time, but it, being involved in school safety and issues that we're dealing with, this is where you start.
Yeah.
This is where it happens. It's, it's not us, it's not anybody else, it's right there, those three right there will make it happen long-term, and this is what, this, I mean, replicate this however you can, if you do it next year, it'll be even better than it is, but knowing that you're the ones that's gonna make the difference for these other kids that are having their struggling, that's, I said two of them got help, it's worth every minute that was spent for those two students, and so I, hands off to you guys, that's awesome. You guys did a great job, Blaze, putting it all together, identifying issue, problem, and you tackled it. It'd been just as easy to go, dang, that didn't look very good, but you didn't do that, and I think that's even more important, the fact that you didn't just, dang, I wish it wasn't that bad, or wouldn't indicate that, tackle it. That's how we're gonna change this.
I do have a suggestion for next year. I didn't get to see him speak either, because I was with you getting ready, so next time, invite me, at 1:30, and I'll, I'll have my handler take me to wherever it is we go at 1:30.
Hopefully, it stays until next time, too. One thing I really wanna point out, just as someone who has been a part of this event, I was obviously a student ambassador, but also, we sat through the sessions and like heard these speakers, and one of the things that I really noticed before this event actually took place, is that seeking help, whether it's mental health issues, or abusive relationships, suicidal thoughts, drug and alcohol abuse, seeking help just at Glendale before, I feel like was such a stigma, like no one did it, and now that we've put on this event, I feel like people are talking about it, and it's no longer a stigma, and people know that it's okay to seek help, and so that is just something that I've seen on the response side, so.
Makes me wanna clap, that's awesome.[835.54][835.54](applause) Now that you've got me crying, you've got more, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna add another thing that these kids did when we started planning this logistically. You know, freshmen, their frontal lobe isn't developed as much as seniors.
Amen, sister.[855.12][855.12](laughter)
We decided to group separately, so it's not, normally assemblies would consist of all the freshman class, sophomore, or your senior, what the kids wanted to do is group everyone together, and the most bone-chilling experiences is you've got, how many kids were on the phone? About 1,400 kids in a gymnasium, and as Mr. Lee and I spoke, you could have heard a pin drop.
You could have, that I know.
During the keynote speaker, and that is major kudos to you guys. We got their attention, and the keynote then kept their attention, and that's what we want.
What, there's more?
No, well.
Go ahead.
We, well, no, we have to move on, we, you would all keep talking about, but I just wanna point out that I'm very proud of our district and our school leadership for looking at the data, seeing the urgent need, and then looking at ways to pull the levers, because there's not a magic wand out there, but I'm, thank you for being brave and vulnerable, and being willing to dive into those conversations. If you don't know Leslie Skinner, you should definitely thank her for her many, many years of PTA engagement at Glendale. I think she has a senior now.
Yes, I do.
So she's almost, almost done, but.
And I'm alumni, I'm one of the other.
That's exactly right. Nice. I've worked with Leslie for many years, and I just wanna just give a shout out to her, that the parents who helped, and the businesses who helped raise the funds to even pull off this event, please tell them thank you as well. And I love that we have student leaders developing, and that you all get to test and practice your leadership skills, so from all the planning, to the debriefing, to the continual improvement, to speaking tonight, we are proud of you for developing as leaders, and I have to point out that I know the middle guy since he was born, so I know, I used to work with his mother. So, we are proud of the work that you've put together, and I love that you are looking at having tools, looking at having a language, changing the culture of, of the conversation around really important issues, so just share that.
And say hello, because I'm coming back for the next thing we're doing too, so I'll be there, whatever, I think that's next week, so say hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1005.12][1005.12](applause) And remember what I told you, you don't have to stay.
I'll walk them out.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you, Natalie, thank you. You're a giver, thank you. Oh, you're awesome, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to 8.01, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. We have the 2018D policy update, the following policy updates were brought forward for first read March 5th. Involving Policy IL, the Assessment Program, and JHD Student Counseling Program. Is there a motion that the board adopt the policies as presented that we heard about last time?
So moved.
Thank you, Tim, and may I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles, and let's vote. All right, yeah. Okay, and that passes, we'll move on to New Business. Okay. Let me think, what do I have to do here? Is this just, all I say is that Charles doesn't participate?
Yeah, this is an item that was removed from consent agenda due to a relationship between a board member and staff, so it will require abstention of one board member, it has to be voted on separately, so.
So is there a motion that the board approve the personnel election as presented?
Send it.
Thank you, Alina, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry, and we'll vote, absent our one friend. Great. Okay, and that passes, we'll move on to Unfinished Business, involving property automobile and liability insurance. We're not having anyone come to the podium, because Dr. Jungman presented about this at the last meeting, and this involves property automobile and liability insurance renewals. Is there a motion that the board approve the property automobile and liability insurance renewal with current carriers as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Charles, and a second?
Second.
Bruce? Thank you, and let's vote. And that passes, we'll move on to 10.02, which is the Sidewalk Easement at Watkins Elementary, and we will not have anyone at the podium, because Dr. Jungman presented on this at the last meeting, and this involves the City of Springfield's request for real property rights to a sidewalk easement on the Watkins Elementary campus that was presented March 5th. Is there a motion that the board approve the granting of a sidewalk easement to the City of Springfield for the extension of a sidewalk adjacent to Watkins Elementary along the east side of Missouri Avenue from Jean Street North to Woodlawn Avenue, and to authorize the President of the Board to execute the sidewalk?
Sidewalk agreement.
I don't.
Sidewalk agreement.
I seek not to put down any sidewalks in this town.
Yeah, how are you placing concrete?
We're gonna find out.
How's your wheelbarrow skills?
I was going so strong on that sentence, to execute the sidewalk agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Tim, and a second?
Second.
Vote against it.
Thank you, Alina. I'll call you so you can take pictures. Let's vote. Okay, and that passes, and then we're on 10.03, Ms. Embry, Providing an Update on the Budget Development Process Related to GOCAPS and the Health Benefit Trust. This is informational only.
Indeed it is.
But you can help me build that sidewalk if you like, because I'm gonna need helpers. And Mike said, "It's good to know who your friends are in the room, because I saw nobody else raise their hand, just Mike, Shane."
It was right there in front of me.
Laura, I mean, I have friends in the audience, nobody was there for me. Just me and you, Mike.
Okay. So, I feel a bit out of sync, since Dr. Jungman handled the presentation for me last time.
Yeah, when you were busy with some important stuff.
I was busy with some very important, I should have posted a picture of my new grandchild.
I think you should.
But that might, might not have worked out so well, so.
It's not in the presentation?
Yeah.
It's not in the presentation? I should have, yes. Okay, so, this is a reminder slide, as we journey through the budget development process, this is to help us re-center on that which we will be providing to you holistically, for the June board meetings, where we provide the recommendation at the study session meeting, and then the, the actual budget itself would be provided to you at the last meeting in June. So, we've provided for you the five separate funds that make up our operating and regular governmental funds, those are the ones for which we report to the state of Missouri, and then we do have two fiduciary funds, that is, the Health Benefits Trust Fund and the GOCAPS Fund, and this evening, we're talking about those fiduciary funds, so that means the money doesn't belong to the district to spend on operational costs, it has a very specific purpose, and we manage it. This calendar reminds us of our process by which we will analyze each of these funds, talk about our current year information, and any information we do have relative to the new year planning. So, again, that reminder, we are the custodian of the fiduciary funds, and we do get audited on these each year by the financial auditor, but they're just not reported on that ASBR report, or the financial report that goes to the state. Our discussion objectives this evening are to talk about the governance and support, the participation, our tuition rate, and course offerings, as well as the budget, and this information is the same as has been presented in the past, we have added, we've missed including that the Springfield Chamber of Commerce is contracted with to provide engagement with the businesses, and to help manage those business partnerships, but otherwise, it is still served by a GOCAPS Board of Directors, and that's representative of multiple districts, and superintendents are participating in that. We started this management process back in August 2015. The support, again, is tremendous, our business community is wonderful in engaging with us, and we, we've learned from them that it's a win-win, they are reaping benefits of that as well, and, and engaged in providing for workforce development for students who participate in the program. We have a strand advisory committee that handles the programming, and I should note that Dana Hubbard is our representative from Springfield Public Schools, serving within much of this work. We also have summer teacher externships, and this is where teachers are encouraged to engage with the businesses in our community, beyond those who participate in the instruction of the students. In the current year, we have 11-member districts, those are listed for you on that slide, Bolivar, Fair Grove, Logan-Rogersville, Marshfield, Nixa, Ozark, Republic, Spokane, Springfield, Stratford, and Willard. Three associate districts are Branson, Reed Spring, and Hollister, and then we have three affiliate districts that are grouped together in a couple of settings. Lake Region is including Camden Town, Conway, and Lebanon, and Monette and Pure City represent one, as well as West Plains. For FY '20, we do anticipate a couple of changes, Branson will move from an associate to an affiliate member, and Bolivar will no longer participate in GOCAPS program.
What does that mean?
They.
They're expanding some career programming in-house, so that they're not gonna send students. They've had a little bit, it's always, as we've known, the distance students have to travel, and Branson.
Takes some time.
Branson is moving to an affiliate, so they'll run their own program in their region, and be an affiliate member, and it's always been a distance barrier a little bit for some students to travel both from Bolivar and Branson, so.
That makes sense, that's the program growing.
Exactly.
So in the current year, we have 280 available seats per semester, the tuition is 1,100 per semester, paid by the sending district, or 2,200 annual tuition per seat, and for those who participate as affiliate members, they pay $2,000 for the year. This generates $622,000 in tuition, and that is the budget that's represented within our general budget summary that you just approved as part of the treasurer's report.
Carol?
Yes.
How many applications for those 280 seats do we get, and how, how do we make the decision of which of those are part of the 280?
I'm going to phone a superintendent friend on that one.
So I sit on the board with groups, so we get to see some of that, and it varies from year to year, and it's strand to strand, so of that 280, I think we get around that number of applications. Now, we don't fill, we fill healthcare very easily, but we, we're struggling with engineering manufacturing a little bit, as well as technology have been our two struggling strands, entrepreneurship and healthcare fill up really quick, and we actually sometimes have excess applications than seats, and then each district gets a number that they get, and if it goes over that, then the district decides, there's an application, there's a, an actual essay that the students write, so count the buildings, if they are over their number of applications and seats, we make the final decision.
So if there's room, everyone gets in?
You got it, exactly, only if you go above the number of allocation for your district, or if you're, if another district doesn't fill all their seats, those become available for other districts to take in access, so, and then only if you reach that maximum point of fill, and the only places that we do that typically is healthcare, we've got two classrooms there, so we've expanded that, so that we don't have near as much of that, so.
Remind me, all of those are face-to-face interactions, as opposed to our online programs?
Yep, these are three-hour, a morning and an afternoon session. They can go either morning or afternoon in any of those strands, except for education, it's only a one, it's a half-strand currently, so it's not offered.
The teacher strand?
Yes, the teacher strand, yep.
So, for our planning for next year, for the 19, 20-year, the governing board has approved a tuition rate increase, it's ever so slight, at $25 per seat per semester, or a 2.27% increase, and the course offerings in the current year are identified here, we have two strands of medical and health, one strand of engineering and manufacturing, one strand of entrepreneur, one technology, and then 0.5 teacher strand, as Dr. Jungman just indicated. So, I mentioned to you that the 622,000 was within the budget, it's actually 623, because 1,000 is budgeted for interest income, so that's the difference there, the slide previously was tuition. Expenditures in the current year are budgeted at 609,083, and we're estimating currently a fund balance at the end of June 30, 2019, of 123,685. This shows you the distribution of those costs, so no different than our regular operating budget, it is a people business, and so salary and benefits is just over 71%, purchase services 24.62%, and that would include that chamber agreement, as well as other agreements, and then supplies shows at 4.11%. We do charge an administrative fee to the GOCAPS program for the service of managing the funds and running the payroll at 3.5%, and for FY '18, the administrative fee was just slightly over $20,000. Any other questions about GOCAPS? Sure.
Get off the, the teacher strand. What kind of response they've had?
Yes, this was, this was year one.
Yeah, it was year.
And I don't have the applica, we're in application phase right now, but the response has been very strong. It's actually housed at Sherwood, so SBS has been able to house that strand. The teacher that's been teaching, it's been amazing that we were able to bring in to be a part of it. So I think the students' response has been very, very good and the experiences that they've been able to gain have been strong. So we're, we're gonna monitor to see, is this something that we would want to expand based on application? But we want the student enrollment to drive that instead of us forcing it, so.
Do any of the other programs like this, more camp city, even have a teacher strand?
They do, yeah, yeah. I know Blue Valley, which is the original, GOCAPs has an education strand. I know Monette, even our regional, in their little affiliate program, they've got some teacher education that started before we did, actually, so.
I think it's working for them.
Yep, yep. Oh, it's, it's our, this is a play towards workforce, right? And part of the workforce is making sure that we have great teachers in the classroom. We need to inspire that while they're in high school, not when, when everybody else is fighting for them right now and saying, hey, we need you as teachers, so.
So I'm only half kidding when I say that that contract has a special clause that says that they have to come teach for us. No one reads that part real carefully, but I've penciled it in.
Some of our neighboring pure districts may not want that.
Then they should read their contract carefully. Yep, that was great. I like that. Do you have more?
We'll shift gears and talk about Health Benefits Trust. So again, this is a fiduciary fund. This is because we are self-insured and with self-insurance, we pay the bill just like any insurance premium, but instead of it's going off to some company like Blue Cross Blue Shield or somewhere like that, it goes directly into this checking account to pay for the claim. So we'll cover a little more about that, also stop-loss insurance, the fund sources and the cash flow that we're experiencing currently as well as district contributions. So the self-insurance game for Springfield Public Schools, schools has been very beneficial. And it's actually been quite amazing to me. This is one of the things that I had not experienced prior to coming to Springfield Public Schools and certainly it was a good decision to leap into that arena by the district and by the Board of Education, however long ago that occurred. Overall, the plan costs are reduced because you don't have that third party taking some fee structure for their work. We do have partners though, and I'll mention that as we journey forward, but we're allowed to have a plan design that meets the needs of our population. And we do carry the stop-loss insurance and it's the same information as I reported to you a year ago regarding how we protect ourselves from catastrophic claims that may occur. So this is an example to show you again how that would be paid out. So you can see we have three different claimants listed and, I don't know if I have a pointer or not. So for claimant number one, let's say they, they had a $400,000 claim or a medical bill. We have the specific deductible of $300,000, meaning that leaves $100,000 that we would be required to pay and that goes towards our aggregate specific fund deductible. With each of the claims, we continue down that path. Once we reach the level of $225,000, then the claims are covered by our third party. Our stop-loss carrier is Sun Life Financial. Our partners in this, you well know that Mercy is our medical services provider. Also Delta Dental is our dental services provider. And then we have these other partners who assist us in the self-insurance process and that includes MedPay. They're the ones that process all the medical claims, so none of those come into our office. No one on staff is reviewing any one specific medical information. Delta Dental handles the administrative dental claims processing and that's a very small piece of the work. And then MedTrack handles our pharmacy benefit administration with overall support being provided by JW Terrell, our broker for insurance purposes. The employee premiums in Springfield Public Schools are 100% funded and have been for, I believe, ever. I couldn't find any information in our history that indicates that that, Bruce, thank you, the registered historian at the table. That is, that is incredible.
From this, we should go into Bruce has been here forever.
He has been here forever, yes.
Since we started off with an insurance.
So, yes.
He hired children in Fairbanks.
Our medical premiums are $460 per month per qualifying employee. Dental premiums, $1085 per month per qualifying employee. And so that makes that annual premium paid $5,650.20. We do have participants who are retirees. There's a Missouri statute that requires that public educators, or education, rather, organizations in the state of Missouri must allow retirees to participate. And then certainly we have some people who might be on Cobra for a small window of time when they separate for individual reasons. So those premiums are paid by the employees and also the employees pay for their dependent care coverage.
With apologies for this awful phrase, but how many covered lives?
I can tell you that on the very next slide. So there's also interest income, that, that is some of the, no, I added a slide, I'm sorry.
Before you go, the retiree insurance, is it all into one plan or is there a retiree plan versus a employee?
Currently, it's one. We are exploring other options to provide more affordable plan design for retirees, especially those who qualify for Medicare. Okay, so that, that is the revenue source for us. This slide just simply tells you how the revenues and expenditures are structured. And I will highlight for you a couple of things in addition to that which I've mentioned. We also pay for wellness coordination out of the Health Benefit Trust Fund because we believe overall that benefits our employees with regard to managing their health. So this also references how the ebb and flow occurs. Oftentimes, our employees will seek certain treatments in the summertime for those who have that availability to do that. And so you can see oftentimes a spike in claims in the fall following the summer services. This grid shows you our claim, or excuse me, our premiums since 2014. And I can tell you that there have been a couple of adjustments since, I believe, 2011 where it went to 425, then it went to 460 July 1, 2014. And it has stayed at 460. And again, the district is paying that. And that's very, very low. When you look at the family coverages and if you compare our rate structure to our peers, you see that we are in oftentimes half the cost on the dependent care. So all of this is part of what we're analyzing as we look ahead to plan design options and how we can ensure that we're protecting the fund balance of this structure so that it will be sustainable. So you asked the question about lives covered. 6,060 lives are covered through the Springfield Public Schools Insurance Program. So that includes dependents. Our employee base is 3,536. And then we have, again, a small number of retirees at 448. And at the time this data was pulled, there were 14 Cobra elections at that time.
I'm a little surprised that it's only 448 retirees. I don't know why. Is that, I would have guessed there would have been more than two.
Once people hit Medicare, they often quit paying for this, right? And so that's why there's a lot of districts that actually offer a supplement of some sort. It's not at the full cost, that gives them some other options, so that's one of the things we're evaluating.
So the district investment in employee insurance on an annual basis is just under $20 million. So again, we pay that $20 million into this separate fund to then pay, have the fund pay for the claims that are made. So let's talk again about the reserve balance recommendation. And this slide is the same as I have shared with you in the past. We've simply updated the dollar amount because there is no legal requirement with regard to a monthly fund balance. I, again, still find that incredibly interesting. There is a general rule of thumb through the industry though, if you reach out to pure districts or others who have self-funded insurance, and that is that you would maintain two months of claims plus three months of administrative costs. And by that rule, our estimated desired reserve fund balance is $4.6 million based on our current data, current average claims.
So did you say we don't have a policy on that?
There's no legal requirement.
No, I understand.
Right.
I understand, but you made a comment of general rule of thumb. Does this board not have, that's what we would do, have two months and three months of administrative costs? Or is that just a decision made?
It's, it's our practice and we'll be talking more about how that fluctuates. So the, the challenge of maintaining a set policy would be that there might be some reaction that might need to happen based on the claims experience as I'm going to show you in just a moment. So, yes, so hang on. Okay, so, so the blue, yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Lee. So you'll note FY '18 is this blue line and this is a fiscal year month-to-month fund balance report. So it's July through June, our fiscal year. And you can see that at one point we hit that $7 million mark and this is a year ago. Then I mentioned that a number of claims often happen during the summer months. And so then we trend downward to September. Again, this is the fund balance each month. And then it kind of levels off again. And the reason it spikes here is because we generate balance of contract checks by June 30 that pays for teachers their July and August premiums. So that is normal. You can see also that our, our low point was just under $5 million. Now, let's take a look at the current year and you can see we started out on the same path, but then the waters parted right there because we've had some significant claims occur in the past months. And our highest claim period ever was in December. And it's some anomaly cases that, and again, I don't have the specifics of, of what that means, but our, our insurance, MedPay, they're watching the information. We're doing some analytical work to determine, are these going to continue or are they, are they anomalies that occurred in that period of time? And that's the information that we have at this point in time, that this will not be a continuing trend. However, it does cause us to pause and think, okay, what, what reaction do we need to make to this particular situation?
Yeah, the waters parted quite aggressively.
They did, yes. So, so, okay, so we'll, we'll continue moving forward. So with that, that chart in mind, again, I mentioned to you, we use the rule of thumb, two claims, months, and then three administrative costs, three months of administrative costs. So by that logic, that would call for us to have, these are the actual costs that we've extrapolated for this purpose. And by that logic, that would mean that on an annual basis, we would need $31.6 million. But we have budgeted $28 million for this purpose. But I must say that reaching the 31.6, again, that's highly unlikely because we don't, we have not continued to have the same high claims month like we did in December or the months around it. So we're, we're watching it each month. We actually have a meeting, Ms. Rector and I have a meeting on Thursday. We're meeting again with JW Terrell and so we're continuing to analyze and determine what would be the recommendation moving forward to ensure that we have an appropriate level for a fund balance at the end of each year and also on a monthly basis. So for FY '18, the average fund balance was just over $5.8 million. And based again on our, and so far this year, we're at $3.4 million. There have been months in the past years where we were less than that and there were situations where the district did need to make a contribution to the fund.
Okay, this is not my strength, as you know. But what I'm thinking in my mind and what I'm struggling with is there is information available that would allow us to evaluate and contemplate the future, but we don't access it. So it feels like the best we ever could, meaning we purposely don't access people's personal information about what's going on. So I am struggling with what beyond guesswork and prayer could possibly give us a way to proceed.
That's why we contract with third-party administrators because they can.
Share that with us, but they do have access to it.
They give us high-level information from which we can make recommendations for moving forward.
So they have access to it and can contemplate it for the advice they give you, but they're still not gonna share with you those specifics.
Absolutely, that is correct.
That helped a lot.
Yes.
They, they could check whether, they would know whether these are chronic, long-term conditions.
But they're not gonna say, Joe, the ruble, has this.
Or if, if there will no be, there will no longer be claims because that person passed away. They would, they would know that type of information.
But they wouldn't share it?
They would not share.
Yeah, I, that helped a lot.
We do not know names, we do not know specifics. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so again, this is, so this now is a year-to-year comparison and it's doing a dipstick check in the month of January of each year.
There's gotta be a better way to say it.
There probably is. You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you can see that as we cruised down here towards 2012, 2013, we really maxed out on fund availability. So there was an investment into the fund and then another investment occurred in 2015. And we've had this upward trajectory since that period of time, kind of leveled off a little bit. But then, again, this current year, it has not played out as we wanted. And again, the reason the desired balance line has changed is because it's relative to claims and would continue that upward trend. So, next steps, we, as I mentioned, we are evaluating our health insurance plan and the premiums and what type of plan options we might have. We have committed through our budget development process so far to ensure that we are allowing for 100% funding of employee coverage of medical. That would be something that could be a conversation moving forward, but that's our assumption at this point. And again, compared to other districts, we have an incredible health plan that not only provides great coverage, but also the premiums are kept at a very low rate, so.
You know, just speaking for me, but I like that we do that. I'd like us to keep doing it.
Yes, it is a good thing. It is a good thing, yes. So I, I should mention to you, you might be curious, and I'm not recalling in this moment if I have shared this during a Focus Area 3 report, but it's been some time ago that we shared about the, the MedTrack discount that we were anticipating and we originally communicated and estimated that it would be $800,000. And I have information today that indicates it came in at $951,147.
We accept.
Pardon me?
We accept.
Yes, so that's great information. And, and we continue to enjoy our discounts with Mercy through that program that was negotiated and we'll continue to do what we can to.
Keep it up. You're doing great.
Keep it flowing.
The reality is, you know, for the last five years, we've been pretty blessed to not have to add to our premium.
That's incredible.
That's not gonna be, that's incredible. I mean, ask any district around here, that's not the case. Or at the private employer, it's not the case that either employees have had to pick up or the district has had to pick up more. Our plan is to keep with 100% funding. It's an attraction retinule that we hope to be able to continue, but it's going to require a budget allocation this year for the first time in a few years for us to ensure that so that we can get that balance where it needs to be, so.
Could we, at some point, could we get sort of, because we, we look at salaries comparable to other region districts.
We, we have that on order. We've provided some preliminary information. Part of the challenge in looking at that is a number of districts even have, they have so many different plan options that, you know, the grid will be really, really large. But one way that our broker has approached that is to identify the most comparable plan to our plan and that can be the information that we provide to you.
Yeah, that's one of the good things about being large is we've been able to self-insure on our own. A lot of the other districts are in consortiums and they have a plan design that gives four or five different options that the district can choose. So they maybe have a PPO, they may have a high deductible health plan or a couple of those. So we'll want to make sure that as we show you those, because we only have one plan. They have seven or eight plans. We'll want to show you kind of the cost of the plan that's similar to ours, I guess, and maybe what their low-end plan is and their high-end plan would be. So we'll try to put together some kind of good comparison so that you can, but what we know as we've looked at them, because we've compared, is ours is a great plan as compared to our peers.
I like that it's a great plan.
When does the contract come up with Mercy again?
I stood here and knew that somebody was going to ask me that and I don't have that in my back pocket. Penny, do you know that?
It wasn't that long ago.
It was recently.
Didn't seem like it.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
I think it's three and it can have a couple extensions.
Yeah, to get to five.
But we're gonna have a presentation that we can look forward to around these issues.
We will provide you additional information, yes.
Awesome.
So a reminder, April 9, we are going to talk about bond and debt service.
Oh, that sounds great. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
I know you're super excited.
Yeah.
But one of you won't be board president anymore by then.
Excuse me, I just had to scratch.
Actually, six of us won't be board presidents. Actually, six of us won't be board presidents.
She said anymore.
Can I mess it up?
Okay, is it time for me to do something?
Yes.
All right, then let me stop dwelling on my non-presidential era that's coming. And, let's do public comments to address non-agenda items, and we do have one this evening, so I read the rules about that. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerned individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary, and she will distribute them to the Board members. And we have Cindy Hosmer here. Good morning, Ms. Hos, good morning. What was that? Good evening, Ms. Hosmer.
Good evening, how are you?
You waited patiently to speak to us.
Yes, I have. And I know I only have three minutes, so I'll try to make it fast. My name is Cindy Hosmer, and I just want to bring up a few topics that have been on my mind recently. I have five, I've had five children, past, present, in the public school system, and three presently right now. The first thing that has been heavy on my mind is the Chromebooks. I have two children that, it's a daily battle with our Chromebooks. I know that Chromebooks have, are a part of the future and of technology, and I know that they've impacted our children, you know, probably a lot, but I wish that there was a different way for them. When my children come home with their Chromebooks, I have one 12-year-old boy, and his main concern is to play video games on Chromebooks. And my, my main concern is not so much for myself, but I always think about other kids who are not being attended by parents. I'm a stay-at-home parent, and I watch my children, but I think about parents who have to work or work the night shift. I'm thinking, you know, what are these kids doing? Are they staying up all night playing on the books? You know, and so, the other thing I want to say is, I don't give my children, I don't give my 12-year-old a phone. My 16-year-old does have a phone, but my 12-year-old does not. I don't believe in giving phones until, until at least eighth grade. But, the other, aside from that, I, the big question is, I wish there was something that we could do about that. I've talked to the principal about it, about not bringing home his Chromebook, but he still sneaks at home. But the other thing I want to talk about is, I saw a news report about for sales, about cellphones being only present during lunch and before and after school, and I wish that we could implement something in our school system. It is the Morgan County R2 Middle School. They have completely taken cellphones out. I know that cellphones at school are huge traction, and I wish that we could do something to change that. And I feel like it is, the pressure is on because I know that teachers don't want to deal with it, and I don't want to deal with it. My sister's son watched a whole series of movies at school, and before finally, at the last series, the teacher finally had, got the nerve to tell the mother, my sister. But it's disturbing. I don't think that we should have phones in the classrooms. I think that they can bring them to school, but as far as school, cellphones being in the classroom, I think should be stopped completely, so, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, we appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to move to a report from administration. Dr. Goodman.
We're good, and I'll turn it over to Stephen and work our way around.
Great. Just a couple of updates, wanted to let you all know, coming up on April 1, nominations will be open for the 2019 Hall of Fame class, so we'll have information going out. We'll be seeking nominees, and we always have a great list of SPS alum that we look forward to recognizing. Wanted to provide just an update on our outreach to share information about Proposition S coming up on April 2. We've completed more than 150 presentations to staff, parents, and the community, and I know that many of you have been very much a part of those presentations, so thank you for that. We've also completed open house tours for the community at all six of the sites that are slated to receive major renovations or reconstruction. We've had a number of great questions and conversations with people, and that has been a success. The videos that are on social media that feature all of the projects have now been viewed more than 120,000 times on social media. So, the community has responded to the Community Task Force on Facilities who are featured in each of those videos. So, I believe that includes my updates and.
Just real quickly, I will again remind you that we are in the midst of hiring season, and I want to publicly say thank you to all of our leaders and our team members who have been out actively recruiting, participating in job fairs as well recruitment events, participating in more than 200 job interviews to date for teaching staff. And so, our leaders throughout the district have taken very seriously our challenge to hire early, and we appreciate that and their support. And to that end, one of the strategies that we continue to monitor is our early hiring incentive, that notification of a decision to resign or retire early. This year, we have 93 total building teachers or administrators who qualify for that incentive, and that is very comparable to where we've been the last few years, ranged from 98 to 78 to 96. And so, that continues to be a very strong incentive for us, and we appreciate the support for that program as well.
Just a couple of quick updates. One, explore registration opened up on March 4, and we currently have just about 4,600 students already heard for that summer experience. And I like to differentiate, we have 214 of them as pre-kindergarten students. We try to get that number close to 1,000, so we'll be monitoring very closely as we continue to progress through this last quarter of the year. In light of what Glendale shared tonight, I went in and found our mental health initiative that's been brought to light tonight, and we've had about 140 student referrals in that Hillcrest Theater Pilot Program with 90 intakes already scheduled. So, we are trying to move that initiative forward and continue to provide those sports and learn from this pilot. I know on Thursday, many of you will be joining us for the Rose Banquet, where we'll be on 59 of our high performers throughout the district. It's a great event to celebrate academic achievement and hear about the future plans of these young scholars. And then lastly, if you have no plans on Thursday morning, we invite you to Hickory Hills to view Battle of the Books, which is a great event for school students. It's a book list, they get like 20, 30 books. Each kid's responsible for five or six of those books, and then they have a big, kind of a college scholar bowl around the content of those novels. So, it's a great event, and I hope you can join us there at Hickory Hills on Thursday.
Is it all day?
It's pretty much all day, the morning, couple rounds, they'll take a lunch, and then the championship rounds will be in the afternoon. So, it'll be tense in the afternoon, so if you want to swing by and see us.
Well, you've heard from me a few times, however, I would like to provide some clarity on the Mercy agreement. I looked it up on Board Docs because it's just that easy. And April 17, 2018, that the agreement was approved for this renewal.
Ooh, that's what I thought.
It does indicate, it's three years in total, so it's for the 2019 calendar year, so it runs through December 31, 2019, with the availability for those two one-year extensions.
Extra points, nice work.
And otherwise, there is a flurry of budget work happening behind the scenes like crazy with all of us engaged.
So, at this point in time, should any of us have questions about anything that your brain is weak and calling you?
Absolutely.
Along the way?
Along the way, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
That's it, from the team. It's fourth quarter, we're ready to run to the end. Our team's back, excited from spring break. We've been in schools this week and seeing, you know, students already prepping for the end, and that means assessment window, because fourth quarter really is a big assessment. We try not to teach directly to test, but we also want to make sure that our kids are prepared to be successful. So, we understand that this is the time where there's going to be in a course, there's going to be a map, there's going to be a ready, there's going to be all of these things that we use to kind of judge their success coming their way. So, if you have kids, encourage them to do great. We're doing that, obviously, in our buildings, and we'll be running to the end, eight weeks, and we'll be ready to walk some kids across the stage as well as send them home for the summer. Projected, it's not official yet, obviously, there's no cap on snow days, they can happen in April occasionally, so we're going to pray that it doesn't happen before. Last day would be the 21st, I believe, at this point, which would be Tuesday, we've got three makeup days, so we'll be back up and be out here on the 21st.
There's eight weeks left to school?
Eight and a half, yeah.
Wow.
It gets here before we know it, so.
You feel that way.
Run to the end, so, yeah. Yeah, they can give you the day, an hour, minute count, ask our seniors, they know exactly. They get out a little earlier than the rest of the stadium, so it'll be here before we know it. We're excited to continue to serve our kids up until the end. Legislative update, the other good thing is last week was spring break for us, this week is spring break for the legislative. So, your email from MSBA has slowed down significantly this week, but it doesn't make it any less important to stay engaged. This is the window that we know our legislators are in town even during the week, so if you see the opportunity to engage, please tell them thank you for the work that they've done, for that have stood with us, and we mentioned that last week. Lincoln Huff, our local senator, stood up against an ESA bill that we think would be damaging to the state of Missouri as well as our students here locally, and we appreciate him taking that stand. The charter bill that is moving through the House hasn't moved, good news, it's been kind of on the list for two or three weeks, and it's never made it to the floor, which means that the votes don't exist yet, and that means that your conversations have worked successfully, not just in Springfield, but across the state. So, school board members have been engaging, as well as teachers for sure, parents around the value of pension and how they want to continue to keep that at Missouri core value and not expand some of the reform projects that may or may not have great success. So, stay engaged. We will be running just like we do after fourth quarter, and fourth quarter after spring break to the end, it gets intense. Legislative level, this is, budget will go to begin to be debated on the floor. As soon as we get back, the House budget looks relatively good in general. The formula stayed fully funded. The only thing that saw a reduction was transportation, from a $10 million increase to a $5 million increase, and that's statewide, so that's change across our system. But every penny counts, and we know that transportation holistically is underfunded by about 200 million statewide, so anything that they can do to help contribute to that would be good. That's the core thing, that's in our legislative platform. The most important thing is that the foundation formula be protected. It's a stream for our system and helps us serve our students. So, stay engaged on the revenue side, stay engaged on the couple of big bills that have been high priorities, and we'll need your engagement for the last seven or eight weeks in that session also.
Have you looked at the school start date, what that would impact semester-wise and how it's been at the semester for us specifically?
It's not good, is what we'd say. So, there's one bill that, and it's gotten through the House, I do believe, at this point, and it changed a couple times. It was 10 days before Labor Day at one point, I think it's 15 at this point, but I can't remember which version they passed. There was an amendment to move it to 15. Bottom line is, it would push our, it wouldn't do it for next year because I think it doesn't play out for another year or so, but it would eliminate the ability for us to control the start date.
Under what theory, yeah?
So, there's a couple, so there's two, and you got so.
As long as we're focused on priorities.
So, the advocates for shifting school start date and taking it out of the hand of the local Boards of Education, which says you can start earlier than that now, but you have to have a hearing, which we do, and we've had historically, so if there's public input around community needs, then we can listen to that and adjust, right? So, they want their statewide initiative is that take the local control out of it, and it's driven primarily by two groups. Number one is tourism, because they believe that later start date means more, two things, means more opportunity to earn income potentially as families continue to vacation later in August, which is still a summer window, as well as it is a new staffing, right? Because students go back to school, students staff a lot of positions, as you think about some of the tourist areas, so they can't run those opportunities. So, those are two drivers of that conversation. The concern, obviously, is on the backside, is that if you still go the same number of days, then you're reducing a weekend on the other side or a week or two on the other side. We all know the logic. So, the concern that we would have is that now that Missouri schools have complete flexibility around the number of days they go, right? Used to have some limitations that if you started later, districts may just reduce the number of days, summer vacation got longer, and our services for students decreased because you can still adjust and just go more minutes in the day, right? And because the state formula is now just an hour calculation, it is not a day calculation. So, districts couldn't make that decision. As you think of food service programs that are reduced, support services, and just educational opportunities for kids, it's not something that I don't think this board would be interested in, but we fear that it could happen across the state. The other industry is state fair. The feedback over the last few years is that the state fair attendance has went down and school start date has an impact on that, and if we started later, then more people would attend.
Big picture.
And I'm just telling you, this is, these, yep. Those are the drivers behind those conversations.
That is one powerful tail wag in that.
My concern would be in the semester after.
Yeah, it would depend on that 10 or 15 days because the structure becomes, so just know the whole system is, the semester is based on a Carnegie unit, right? The number of hours that have to be offered in order for us to give credit. That's not a state technically, but it is a norm, right? So, most districts deliver on Carnegie unit, right? So, you have to have so many hours prior to awarding credit, half-credit, full-credit. Right now, we're able to get enough hours in before Christmas in order to get that credit before. If you push that thing back into September, we're not going to have the same number of days unless you extend the school day, which is not our strategy because then you would be reducing days of contact. The other thing that had obviously caught in us has been my major concern and voice is, really messes up all of the dual-credit partnerships that we have with local universities, our OTC partnerships. Our, the way we send ascending schools, it's not necessarily like other districts who have a career center that's just for high school kids, right? Ours is infused into a college environment. Doesn't mean that it couldn't work, but it adds a lot of wrinkles and complications to our dual-credit partnerships as well as our OTC partnership that just, that's why there's local flex, right? To design around the programs and the partnerships that you have locally, but they want to remove that.
In principle, I mean, the state has not, it has not peaked prematurely in its ability to oversee education effectively, so I think we should be suspicious.
So, do engage.
That one is one that's within the outcome.
It would be difficult for our students to graduate at the end of the first semester and then move into their college courses, so there's nothing to do with that.
Well, you have finals windows, you have EOCs that happen even at the end of first semester, right? So, if you're, if you only have a week left, one or two things, those kids early to be more fair to the children, which is going to make that really bad. You're going to lose instructional time and the ability to serve them, and then you're going to have wasted time on the backside. It really, I mean, it's not a good bill educationally, right? But the foundation of why it's being offered, why it's being, nothing to do with education.
Without the other thing, it's part of the country.
Does it have wheels? I mean, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's got some wheels, yeah.
It's been, I think it was ten days.
Yeah, and I have to look.
When you say, if you have to contact our center?
That's exactly right, yep.
A few other things. I'm really glad you brought that up.
State fair. I'm sorry. It's something that you don't, if you don't stay up on it, it'll sneak up on it, and there will be one that'll end up at the May 5 on the bill.
A lot of bills.
I'm sorry, that's awful.
We concur, yes.
All right, are you done with the happy news?
That's it, that's all I've got for legislative.
Yeah, well, we're moving to board comments, so please do, please do. Well, this is just, and I don't think this is something that everyone knows, I think we know, but what a very, very important advocate, Ms. Hosmer, our superintendent, who spent many, many hours there, driving up and back, up to back in all the times he testified, honey pills, and so, I would just like to say that, say to her, thank you, and make it known to all those that might not know, what a very, very strong advocacy and our superintendent's voice and how well-respected he is of our elders and our citizens.
Well, a way to put a positive spin on that.
Yes, and for keeping us informed, you know, you being there, knowing hour to hour how things are going. You know, you being there, knowing hour to hour how things are going and then keeping us informed allows us to know what to do as well.
And we need your engagement, I think, and I've heard that from your association, but we're the elected officials and elected officials, uh, really need to hear the voice of the elected officials locally.
And they have.
Yeah.
Keep it up.
And it's made a difference.
It's made a difference.
Keep it up.
It's like.
It's good, thanks for engaging.
Excellent, anybody else have a comment they want to make this evening that you haven't had a chance to offer?
Really quickly, if you haven't seen the Glendale students who did the, um, C-SPAN documentary, watch it. It's really good. It's in a day and age when there's a rush to the bottom, there was a particularly video, this is good stuff. So, I would strongly recommend.
You've done a great job of promoting that, that's neat, great.
Actually, a little surprised you didn't mention the, the during win, you know, but.
Yeah.
Now that you mention it. You brought it up.
Sorry. It's been a very nice, uh, couple of weeks for women in our community, if I might add.
Nice types of positive.
Well, I want to mention this, I, I don't remember if it was Carol or Mike, but a lot of us will be at the Rose Banquet, uh, this Thursday, the twenty-first. And that's always a really fun time to celebrate those highly successful students. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, we have an election day coming up on April the second. That's very important. And our April study session is going to be on April the ninth. I want you to feel free to put plus delta, uh, up if you wish. And we will be going into executive session tonight. So, may I have a motion that the board meet in executive session to the real estate, personnel, and collective bargaining matters as provided in section six, ten point, zero, two, one subsections, one, two, three, nine, and thirteen of the revised statutes of Missouri. Thank you, Alina, and may I have a second? Thank you, Denise, and can we please vote? And while we're waiting on the voting, I'd like you for being here this evening to celebrate some of the fun parts and endure the other parts.